Like to call this meeting in order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for October 31, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Beeter.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chelka.
Here.
Baylen.
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions here today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
Moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Whedon.
Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is $424,772.15, and from the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, we're making payments of $7,227.25. And there was one large piece of equipment we're paying for today, an excavator, for $225,114. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. There are no questions? This is a resolution? Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chelka.
Yes.
Baylen.
Yes. Item four is a presentation on the, from the Waterloo Development Corporation regarding Waterloo Court Works. Didn't know if you had a PowerPoint or slides or whatever. Okay, great.
All right. Thank you for having us. Jim Miller with Waterloo Development Corp., also here with Bob Peterson, and just wanted to present on the Waterloo Court Works project that WDC is working on right now. So just to start out, a quick introduction of who Waterloo Development Corp. is. We're a 501(c)(3) here in Waterloo focused on downtown redevelopment and revitalization, and then a public-private partnership, working pretty closely with the city of Waterloo to advance redevelopment in the downtown area. And this is a list of our current board members as were made up today. This is just a look at the area of downtown where we've spent most of our time over the last 20 years. This is what it looked like prior to WDC coming in. There's roughly 30 buildings in that picture that no longer exist, that have been replaced with new public projects, the Sportsplex, the Amphitheater. We've helped with the River Lights Experience this summer and continue to purchase properties for light elimination in the downtown. Some projects that we've helped in would be Grand Crossing Apartments, the Cedar Valley Sportsplex is our largest project to date, and then the River Loop Expo Plaza, the Amphitheater, and then the Bridge Lights that we mentioned earlier. So the current project that we're working on is the Waterloo Court Works. So this would be a multi-state tournament center with the ability to host anywhere from 1,200 to 3,200 athletes and spectators every weekend here in Waterloo in the Cedar Valley. It'll have the ability to attract families from across the Midwest, and it'll help support the existing demand from local teams for court space here in the Cedar Valley. The location is going to be over behind the Tech Works campus, so we'd revitalize a brownfield site, make it a productive site in the community again. And then U-Sports, we view this as a catalyst to downtown. It's roughly a $40 billion a year industry, and we expect it to bring a lot of people into the community, staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, and supporting our retail businesses. As we mentioned, it'll be a community and multi-state attraction. We expect the activities on the weekends, the large tournaments, to generate the revenue to support the facility to where during the week we can get our local youth in there, get them involved in sports and using the facility. And then a big part of this is equity and access. You know, U-Sports is an expensive venture for families and kids to get into. Right now, they're having to leave town most weekends for games and tournaments, and you know, if you look at Waterloo schools, it's about 70% of the kids qualify for free or reduced lunch. So to ask them to go, you know, travel on the weekends, stay in hotels, you know, pay gas for meals, you know, that's tough to do. So we view this as a project that'll get more kids involved in U-Sports, and studies have shown that kids who are involved in U-Sports at a younger age have higher educational outcomes and are more likely to continue their education after high school. So in terms of the facility itself, there'll be eight basketball courts in the facility. Those would be flipped sideways and converted into 16 volleyball courts. Overall, it'll be a little over 100,000 square feet. We'll have concessions, some pool space, hospitality areas. And overall, we're looking at a total project cost of $35 million to build this facility. So this is just a look at where the facility would sit. You can see the Courtyard Marriott, the Tech Works Campus, and the Deer Museum, and how the facility would be laid out on that site. This is a little bit closer of an image of the site plan, roughly 300 parking spaces to support the facility, and then direct pedestrian connections over towards the hotel and existing parking at the hotel as well. So this would be a true community partnership. We've been working with the city of Waterloo. They currently own the majority of the land where this would sit. They will continue to own the land and have a land lease with WDC. They've also committed $2.7 million just recently to start working on the site, removing any old foundations and getting it ready for construction. We've also partnered with the Cedar Valley Sports Commission, Ashley Johnson, to learn exactly what we need, what should be in the facility, and how do we attract events to Waterloo, and currently working with community partners and stakeholders as we're out in a capital campaign to raise the dollars for the facility. So we believe it fits really well with the mayor and the city's 2030 Vision Plan for Waterloo to be Sportstown USA, where we're the most rec and sports-friendly town in Iowa. It would also support opportunities for our local youth to get more involved, host more tournaments, and bring families in from across the Midwest. So in terms of where we're at and how we got here, this started back in 2022. We had a feasibility study completed by Ballard King. They're familiar with the community. They completed the study on the Sportsplex before that was built, and they worked with the city on the pool projects this year. So they have had a feel for what the community was and what we needed. We've worked through a pre-construction period with a contractor and architect to come up with the design and cost estimates. And then we've been working with the city of Waterloo, the Sports Commission, reaching out to state and federal sources, and are now currently in the fundraising campaign. We just recently hired a operator for the facility who will help us in the final design considerations, and there'll be a professional company that comes in and runs this. They know how to attract the events, what's expected, when the events are here, and the best way to run one of these facilities. So in terms of who this will serve, it'll be our local youth predominantly. So like I mentioned earlier, you know, we want the events on the weekends, the multi-state tournaments, major tournaments, to generate all the revenue to where during the week we can have this open and allow our local youth teams, potentially the schools, you know, to come in and utilize the facility and make it a community asset. And then we feel it'll partner really well with the Sportsplex, you know, by freeing up some of the court space over there, making the value of the membership at the Sportsplex go up as the amenities would be more freely used by the membership. So again, we feel this will relieve some of the financial and time burdens on our local families. You know, if they don't have to leave town every weekend, pay for hotels, pay for gas, meals, this is an opportunity for them to take part in these activities and do it right here in our community. We're working to get in front of Waterloo schools, have a conversation with them on ways that we can partner and get their kids into the facility. You know, how do we arrange transportation back and forth? So those are ongoing conversations that we'll be having. So in terms of economic impact for this facility, we're looking at anywhere from $360,000 to north of $1 million for each two-day tournament on the weekends, just depending on the size and number of teams that would come into town. We'll have direct hospitality connections with the walkway back and forth to the hotel, and our operating company has an app that they utilize to connect with the local hotels and help drive business to those facilities. And then a big part of this as well is employee retention and recruitment. You know, these are the types of facilities we need. If we don't have these options for kids and families in our community, they're going to look to go elsewhere where these exist. So we believe this gives us a leg up when we're trying to attract employees and businesses into the community by having, you know, quality-of-life amenities that they're looking for. So this is a rendering just of the exterior of the facility as you'd be looking at it from the Tech Works, or the Courtyard Marriott. This is a layout of the interior as set up for basketball with the eight courts. The yellow space down at the bottom is a lobby concession, kind of hangout area, storage on both ends, and then there'll be a loading dock and overhead doors that you can back semis up to to host a variety of events, whether it's gymnastics, wrestling, volleyball, basketball, cheer, dance, you know, robotics leagues. There's all sorts of options and events that could go on here. And then this would be the layout for volleyball. The courts would be flipped, bleachers rearranged, and again, that would allow us to have 16 volleyball courts in the facility and host tournaments up to 96 teams for volleyball. This is a look of the interior, kind of from inside the main entrance, looking down towards the concession areas, and then a look from the concession area out towards the courts. There'll be some high-top seating, some mezzanine for some additional viewing areas, and then a look from out on the courts back towards the main entrance, and this would be in the setup as it would be used for basketball. And then another option that we're seeing there's a lot of demand for is pickleball, so ways to keep the facility busy during the week while kids are in school. It could be used for pickleball, could also host large pickleball tournaments on the weekends. So just one other option for the facility. So in terms of our fundraising goals, we're trying to raise $35 million. Our initial cost estimate on the facility is $32 million. To allow for multi-year contributions, we'll have some financing and interest expense that'll push the cost up towards $35 million. We're currently working on the site preparation right now. You should see some dirt start moving in the next 10 days over there. And then we're currently, you know, in the middle of a capital campaign, so working with the local philanthropy groups and foundations, the city of Waterloo. We were just awarded a Brownfield-Greyfield redevelopment grant from the state for 1.5 million. We expect to go back and ask for a CAT grant once we get closer to 90 or 95% committed on our fundraising. And then we're going to start going out to our corporate community, our businesses, and look for support from them as well. So in terms of our timeline, you know, like I said, we're in the fundraising capital campaign. Site preparation is starting here right now. Our goal would be to, you know, have a capital campaign completed in the next probably 90 days to allow for final design to move forward and construction to start in spring of '24, and then an 18- to 20-month build time with the facility opening in fall of 2025. One benefit of having the operator hired is while we're in construction, they're out booking events, finding tournaments to bring in. So when we do get done and have it opened up, you know, we'll hit the ground running with events right away and activity for the community. So that's a real quick look at the project and what we're doing. And then this is, again, a quote from the mayor and his desire for Sportstown USA as part of the 2030 Vision Plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have on the project, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come in and discuss it and provide an update.
Any questions, comments?
No, it's the kind of stuff I like to see in our communities, so.
Yeah, this is great. Just a couple, maybe, quick follow-ups?
Mm-hmm.
You had mentioned you anticipate going for CAT grant. You got 1.5 from the state already, 2.7 from the city of Waterloo. What do you anticipate that CAT request being?
The CAT grant, we would request up to $1 million, which is their maximum.
That's their max?
Yep.
And how many hard seats are in the facility? I saw bleachers anyways.
Yeah, it'll be all bleacher seating. I believe it would be up to 2,500 that we could accommodate for spectators, and those would be moved around depending on what the event is.
Okay.
You mentioned, Jim, like 90 days for the capital campaign, which is a pretty aggressive timeline. And as far as are you midpoint in that? When you mentioned kind of in the middle of, but I thought maybe that might be the middle of the process, not really middle of funding.
Yeah, so right now, in terms of committed dollars, we're about 35% of the way there. We've given presentations to several philanthropy groups and have had good feedback, but don't have final decisions yet from those groups. Would expect to hear more by Thanksgiving from a couple of them, and then from gaming by year end. So we're off to a pretty good start. The response and feedback has been very positive to date.
And you mentioned like the $35 million, but the building itself, the cost of the building is, do you have even an estimate on that as far as what that would be?
Yeah, the initial estimate is $32 million.
$32, okay.
For the building, the parking, and everything to get it opened up.
Okay. So the site prep and all those are kind of just additional aside costs?
The site prep is included in that.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
All right. Anything? I think this is the first time I've actually heard, well, second, I guess, just recently I sat in on part of it too, so I was going to say, but this is just in the last week or two, the first I've seen it. So I appreciate the presentation and seeing all the work that's been put into it. You mentioned too about the operator that did recently, and I, no, are those the individuals or a group that's going to be looking at uses and trying to generate, or, okay, I wasn't sure what the operators all do.
Yeah, so it's Sports Facilities Company. They're based out of Florida. They'll staff the facility for us. They will be marketing it, finding events. They're extremely well-connected in the U-Sports world. They run probably 30 of these facilities, kind of in the southeast and up towards the Midwest. So this will be their first facility in Iowa, but they've got relationships with all the youth tournament organizations and various leagues and sports. So they're the right people to do this and help us out with the project.
And I saw that, you know, the presentation obviously has basketball and volleyball, but I appreciate that you spoke to wrestling, pickleball, other uses, esports.
Yes.
The spaces seems pretty versatile, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. As word has gotten out, there's been a lot of phone calls coming in on various things we can use it for. So yeah, gymnastics, dance, cheerleading, wrestling, volleyball. There's a lot of use. It's a wide-open box, so conventions, trade shows, there'd be a lot of uses for the facility.
Pickleball, we knew, was right up there. Everybody asked, that's always a second question. Yeah, thank you.
How will policies be developed for like access to the facility throughout the week and when there's not events happening on? Like, I'm just kind of wondering the process for the general public's use of the facility?
Yeah, so that's something that we'll work with the operator on. You know, there's a lot of these facilities that they operate that are owned by cities, and that's an important area of how do we get the public in there. So we're going to start working through proformas, you know, how we're going to make money, how we're going to pay for it, and then some of that'll become more clear in that process as to how we get the community into the facility on a frequent basis.
More to come then, sounds like, and that part, after you've just hired them, so I'm sure.
Yes.
That'll be interesting to. Questions? Any online? Tom, is there anything, any question or comments as well?
Oh, it's the first I've heard about it. I wish them good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Mr. Peterson, do you want to, okay, thank you. Well, thanks very much for the presentation and sharing your office today.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Moving on to item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Good morning.
I just wanted to remind you that this morning we have a site visit scheduled at the Cedar Falls Public Works Facility, and that's just to the west of Hudson Road over in Cedar Falls. Then on Tuesday, November 14th, I'd like to invite all of you out to our Longfellow Facility, so you can tour that mechanic shop and then some of the other outbuildings we have on that campus at that facility. I will be taking photos of all the sites we visit and preparing some type of presentation for you with all of this information. Maybe it's at a future board meeting or through email, or we can talk about that at a later point. So can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Morning.
Morning.
NFSMR, HR Director. So a few things, just first want to let you know that we're going to be sending out some information for upcoming training opportunity, professional development on strengths training that's going to be held in the middle of December, December 11th and 13th. So we're talking with department heads about that, just part of our effort with human resources receiving a larger training budget this fiscal year. So we're working on getting that spent in ways that people can kind of spend time away from their typical workday to kind of reinvest in themselves and learn something about themselves. So that's coming up. We also have been completing management meetings with regards to upcoming negotiation contracts, just collecting information from managers as to what's been working well within the contracts, what are things they'd like to change. I do have to meet with Unit 1 managers still and Unit 6, so that's attorneys for Unit 6, and then Unit 1 is like our clerical courthouse staff. But just to kind of give the board an idea, when we have our closed session with Mike Galloway, as to some of the different things that they think has worked well and in areas that they'd like to see those contracts improve. So. Classification and compensation studies, so they're working on the financial implications of the study, you know, before they come to the board with that report, so which is looking like either November 28th or that first week in December, but they'll be here. Any questions at all, anything? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Mike Kendrickson, Director with Blackhawk County Conservation. Last week I mentioned that on Tuesday evening, the REAP Assembly was being held at Hartman Reserve Nature Center, and I wanted to just give you a very quick recap of how the evening went and just a little bit of information about REAP assemblies. First of all, they're held on odd-numbered years, and so 2023 obviously was a year for the REAP assemblies. The purposes of REAP assemblies are to gain information on, you know, what is REAP doing for your communities? How is it affecting your communities? It's a chance for each region to set goals and legislative criteria that can be taken to the legislative session, which is coming in January and February, as we all know. It's a chance to help our lobbyists understand what are our needs and what do we need to address. REAP assemblies are divided into regions across the state. We are Region 7. That includes six counties: Butler, Bremer, Blackhawk, Buchanan, Chickasaw, and Grundy. And so we all get to come together. We all get to, and it's open, obviously, to everyone, so we get public input, and that's probably the most important thing. It's a very good barometer for us to understand, you know, are we doing the right things with our REAP allocated dollars? Are we meeting the needs of our users? Are we meeting the needs of the people that we serve? And those people are always there. Region 7 has been fortunate to always have good attendance. It was down a little this year than what it normally is, but we still had a good crowd, and a lot of good information was exchanged. We were very fortunate in Blackhawk County. We were represented by members of our Blackhawk County Conservation Board, and we were represented by our Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, and I appreciate that. None of the other counties had either. So it was certainly nice to see that representation from both of our boards. It does show the commitment to conservation, and it's a wonderful thing. We then will break off into group sessions, and in the past, those sessions have been normally devoted to natural resource topics, water quality, outdoor recreation, different things like that. And anyone can go to any of those or numerous ones and gather information, tell their story, you know, explain their needs and those kinds of things. This year it was done a little bit differently. We actually broke into counties. And so we got to hear directly from, you know, the Blackhawk County public that was there, got to come, and we all got to have a great conversation. The messages were very clear. We had about six or seven topics to talk about, but the messages were very clear. Two things are very, very important to the people in Blackhawk County, and that's simply water quality. It ate up most of our hour break-off session. Water quality is just a very, very high concern for the people in Blackhawk County. And secondly, outdoor recreation. What can I do when I come to Blackhawk County Conservation? Are we meeting those needs? And again, it was a wonderful time for us to hear those things. As we work through all the topics, the last little question is always on those topics is what is your county doing for you? And that's always misconceived by the public because they're literally looking at you guys, county conservation. It involves all the municipalities in Blackhawk County too. Cities are involved in REAP. It's not just county conservation. But anyway, they always point the finger back at us. And I just wanted to let you guys know, it was a great opportunity for us, again, to tell our story, because we have stories to tell. And if we talk about water quality, all the things that we're doing right now and all the support that we've gotten from you to be able to do these things, it makes a night like that so much easier for somebody like me, because we got to tell those stories when the fingers came out. We talk about Casey Lake. There's not a better story to tell than what's being done with Casey Lake. That is strictly water quality, folks. We think about, you know, removing the sediment from the lake. It's all about water quality. It's all about re-establishing and rehabilitating the watershed above Casey Lake, and all the work that we'll be doing in that process, you know, for water quality. Water quality involves, you know, grabbing that water, holding it, vegetating the soil so that we don't have erosion and runoff. Our pollinator program is going very, very strong right now. We've got lots and lots of acres to plant, get this fall, and then lined up for the spring. That program is going extremely well. One of the things that got brought up in there by the public was, you know, you're not doing enough for education. The only way we're going to sell this, the only thing you're going to, you know, help with water quality in Blackhawk County is you've got to educate. And I'm glad that got brought up, because sometimes not everyone knows what we're doing. But it was wonderful to be able to tell the story that, oh, I think at least, you know, in the county conservation side, we are doing a lot with education. I think about what's going on at Hartman Reserve Nature Center. I think about the staff increases that we've had over there. We ask for those staff increases because of the thousands and thousands and thousands of young kids and adults that go there, go to our programming and learn these things, and water quality is a big part of what we teach over there. So it was wonderful to be able to tell that story. The second thing, again, that we talked about was outdoor recreation. And when that came up, I don't think I heard a negative comment. I don't know, Dan, did you hear a negative comment? I didn't. People in Blackhawk County are very, very happy with the outdoor recreation opportunities that they have, whether it's biking, hiking, fishing, hunting, birdwatch, you name it. It's out there. Pickleball, they have these opportunities. And so it was wonderful to be able to address those questions when they came up. And so, that being said, a big part of these REAP assemblies is giving you or us And so that being said, a big part of these REAP Assemblies is giving you or us or all of us the opportunity to tell our story, and we were able to do that. And it was nice to hear that it sounds like, you know, we're doing a good job. So I thought all of you should hear that. So.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. It's all of you doing a good job for us, too. But I was going to say, appreciate the fact that, like I said, people look at the county and seeing some of those opportunities and taking advantage of them. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room, anyone on Zoom that would like to do an update? All right, moving on to the minutes approved for October 24th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. Item 7 is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove something for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Very normal. Questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Lalen. Yes. Item 8, Other Business. Resolution that the best bid received from Workspace Inc., Hyawatha, Iowa, for the Recorder's Office Furniture Remodel Project funded through the American Rescue Plan Act with a total bid of $66,170.10 be awarded and direct the chair to sign the same by Sandy L. Smith, County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Here for questions? As many of you know, this was one of the first ARPA projects approved, and then we put it on hold for the space study, and then we put it on hold again, I think, while we decided what was going to be done with the election and the auditor's office. So we're more than happy to proceed with this. We had three bids. This, the bid I'm bringing forward today is the only one that met all the requirements as outlined in our RFP. I had a discussion. Rory has looked it over, so we're very happy to proceed. If all goes well, it will be completed by the end of January.
Timeline was going to be my only question, so what was the time? So that's great.
What was the original dollar set aside for this project?
I believe it was $65,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would be good if you would say you're approving the whole $66,000 to come from the ARPA.
Oh, it says funded through the American Rescue Plan, but to say it is?
Because it's an increase. I'm just going to point out because it's a slight increase from what we were, what you had approved before.
Okay. So we'll include that as part of the motion, if that's all right with everyone. $66,170.10 total will be awarded from the ARPA funds. All in favor, answer as your name is called. Well, please answer as your name is called, whether you're in favor or not.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Lalen.
Yes. Item B, Motion that the Personnel requisition for the Account Specialist Full Time in the Sheriff's Office with a start date of November 13, 2023, to allow for proper training, be approved as recommended by Tony Thompson, Blackhawk County Sheriff.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, This is a resolution that the minor plat request submitted by Ruby Carlson to plat 4.58 acres located west of 10812 Cedar Wopsey Road to construct a new single-family home be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's like there's no one to ask questions if we have any, but I'm assuming none, so please answer as your name is called.
Felka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Lalen.
Yes. Item D, Resolution that Blackhawk County collect a total of $6,489.60 from Thomas Flaherty, which is 96% of $6,650, that Blackhawk County paid for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy training per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and Thomas Flaherty.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments for Michelle? I was going to say on this, Michelle, can you speak to how this is paid back or how?
I don't know that we have an agreement from him. Generally, we set up a payment plan, and they often pay them sooner actually than they're required.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Felka.
Yes.
Lalen.
Yes. Item E, Discussion on the Multi-Departmental Remodel Project.
Morning, Board. Angie Nace with Envision Architecture.
Morning.
Give you a quick update on where we are with a multi-department project here at the courthouse. We are midstream with design meetings. We finally feel like we're at a place with the plan to give you guys an update. We have some final design meetings happening yet today, later today and tomorrow with all the departments involved. And then we are looking at having all design complete by the end of the year and bidding out shortly after the first of the year here. Bear with me as I'm using a program I don't normally use.
Just a heads up, I don't think you're sharing this. It's up on the screen, but I don't think it's shared on our Zoom.
There, messed something up here, but to walk through the plans quickly, on the basement level, we are looking at the current cafe cafeteria space and making that a building break space, including a mother's room that'll be accessed off the hallway. And then we're creating some access to utilize some of the current auditor storage in the basement to allocate some space to offices for the attorneys, as well as expanding the current conference room space into two conference rooms that will be able to be expanded, opened up for elections purposes, for general elections. The main driver of this project being that we are complete with at least the elections component by the 2024 November election, so that's kind of driving the schedule for the whole thing. This has been kind of a quick burn from our end to try to get through all the information. And I apologize, this hatch kind of went solid on you, so you can't see the rest of the floor plan here. I flip up to...
Do you think, Angie, that we'll have adequate time to do everything that we think for that 2024 election or assume there might be a Plan B?
Phasing's going to be a big piece of this. As we get the bids out, we'll have to work with the awarded contractor on the phasing, but our initial gut reaction on this is that we'll have to do some of the basement space first so that we have some space to move people. We're still working through that with Rory and his team and where everyone's going to go during construction so that we can get to elections being completed, and then treasures here will be the last piece of it likely to fall into place because they're not on this timeline.
The timeline, yeah.
So to touch base on treasures, this is first floor. As you come in the lobby, we're staying within the footprint of that room and just reallocating the space and making it more user-friendly from the public side. So we're looking at a queuing system similar to what you might see at the DOT. That is still being selected, but that'll give some space for waiting as people wait for windows. If you walk down there at various times in the day, there is a line out the door, and this will give people a place to sit and hopefully streamline the process a little bit. So they are getting, basically reallocating all the same spaces they have today and just using them differently. And then if we move up to second floor here, slowly, but surely. Used to a different program. Okay, so second floor has had a little bit more of a struggle in terms of getting to this floor plan because of all the different departments that we're touching. But where we have landed here is moving the plat room across the hallway into the auditor space. Elections will be consolidated into one place across the hallway. Right now, they have a few different places, and I have a colored plan to kind of show where everybody's at today. We'll have some real estate space on that side as well, where you see Tim's office, as well as Grant's, and then Karen's. We'll all be on the north side of the hallway. On the south side of the hallway is where we're looking at the accounts payable, accounts receivable. We're getting in a larger conference room space that can be used by any department, but it's also with specific intent for TJ to be able to use for his property tax meetings once, you know, once a year when they're bringing in a lot of the public. And we are snagging a bit of his space from the break room side and creating more of a shared kitchenette space that more people can use together with the intention that that basement break room can be used for going to eat. You can eat at your desk, you can eat in a conference room, but trying to kind of consolidate how everyone is, or what everyone's being given for quote-unquote break space within the department. So we're kind of going down to kitchenettes. Aside from that, it's the workstations required for accounts payable, accounts receivable, and then some copy work and storage space for all the filing. There has been a number of discussions about perception of space and per different areas, so we did do a quick overall review of today's existing square footage versus what we're providing for each department here, and those numbers are a little bit small. But elections is going out by about 200 square feet, and that's a little bit arbitrary in terms of some circulation space. If you look at the plat room, it's going down in square footage just a smidge, but we're just condensing how that is used, and they are looking at some electronic conversion of some of their storage as well. Real estate is about the same. It's just not all in one exact space. Some of the filing has moved outside of their space. The auditor space looks like it went down, but that's in conjunction with the election space going up. There's some shared copy workspace in here. That's probably the swing in that number. If we look at accounts payable, accounts receivable, they're actually going up in square footage, and some of that has to do with probably some of the captured space from both auditors and from TJ's space with the break area. And then we have some non-departmental area that is going down or going up for the shared conference room space. So overall, I think everyone felt a little bit better once we could actually show them numbers and comparisons back and forth. There is some give and take between the departments. That is kind of both pros and cons, but it's trying to hit as many of the positives as we can within the constraints that we have. I think you guys had the plans ahead of this. Do you have any questions according to where we're headed, concerns?
I was trying to remember, do we have the color-coded ones? Okay, she said she can still send those. I didn't think we had the last ones that you're showing, so that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's the easiest way to illustrate to people that it's just, we're just moving things around. We're not, we're trying to be smarter about how we're using some of the space. For example, on the north side of the corridor right now, there's three different cubicles taking up space that are not being utilized aside from catching some storage. And so this is an opportunity to kind of go through that and clean out and consolidate so that we have room for people.
No, I think it seems to be catching all the different needs that were identified. I like the additional conference space on the second floor. That's a nice addition. How big is, how, do you have the square footage of what the room in the basement will be, the elections room?
When it's all opened up.
Yeah, when it's all opened up.
It's going to be about 750 square feet when it's all opened up. And we do have a small little plan down here in the corner that indicates how we have talked with Karen about laying that space out. So there'll be some tables as you, the line will come down the corridor. There'll be some tables that you grab your ballot from, booths set up with your back to the wall, as well as some ADA stations, and then a couple ballot boxes as you walk out the door. So the idea is that we stream through and back out the door.
And so that's utilized really like 99, almost percent of the time will probably be for a conference room or conference rooms. Okay.
And you'll have two now because there'll be an operable partition for you to close. That'll give you two. We did end up taking some of the attorney's space with that, which is where we're trying to reallocate some office space out of that kind of cafe and auditor storage area, and still trying to accommodate what we need to do there. Rory is working with the auditors on storage elsewhere that can be moved out of the building or elsewhere in the building so that we can do all these moves.
And how large is the mother's room?
The mother's room is pretty decent size, actually, just because of where it falls and capturing that corner of that cafe space, so it's 93 square feet right now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it didn't feel like a closet.
Yeah, it shouldn't feel like a closet. There should be plenty of space in there for a nice chair and a, you know, side table for a pump, and then we do have a small sink and counter for cleaning up all the parts and pieces.
Okay. Excellent.
And that will be accessible both to staff and public.
And there's been a lot of excitement, I think, just about that, having that.
I have heard a lot of good feedback about that.
Yeah.
You might need more than one in the end after this one goes through.
That's true. That'd be great. That's great.
Any other questions for the design team?
No. Timeline is, like I said, going to be critical for the whole thing, so obviously everybody's kind of working towards that end.
We were trying to wrap it up and bid out by the end of the year, and it's with all the individual meetings and trying to get on everybody's calendar. It's just not quite happening, so we'll be working the rest of November and December on facilities and IT needs now that we're settling in on a plan, and then we'll have the documents ready to go so that right after the holidays, we can get it on the street.
I think that basement area, like I said, opening that up in time for elections and everything seems pretty critical, and so great that, and it'll be nice then when it's done for conference rooms. Do you want to add anything, Rory? Otherwise that's great.
Just want to start off by saying, you know, we've worked several weeks on this, and I wanted to thank all of the departments and the staffing for their patience and investing their time in working with us on this. You know, some of the key elements, too, that behind the scenes that we're really focusing on are, as we're going through these designs, if you notice the Treasures Department, security. Security was a big item that we're looking at. How do we make that area more secure? How are the people facing the public? Where's the emergency exit? So I really feel excited about actually all the areas, but looking at that from a securities perspective, I think it's definitely going to be an improvement. Also ADA, that was another item that each of these departments now will be able to accommodate anybody with some handicap needs, so that's a huge improvement for us here at the courthouse. And all in all, the break room, Chris, you had mentioned the mother's room. We are very excited about that. Currently, we have probably two staff members that we literally are squeezing them in wherever we can find, and some days it's sitting in an empty deli. So it's just not a great situation. So we are really looking forward to that. And then keep in mind, this mother's room will be open to all, not just staff, but also the public. So as jurors come in, I think that will really be a nice addition to the courthouse. The deli, you know, we put a lot of thought into that. I think it's going to be a very usable space. Obviously, we're taking some break areas away from various departments, so we're hopeful that staff will be able to utilize this. It'll be a nice, comfortable space to be able to take their breaks. We feel it's going to be large enough, and we're really looking forward to making that a comfortable space for the staff to be able to get out of their department and get away for a little bit and take their breaks. So all in all, I feel very good about the design. I wanted to thank Envision. They've been great to work with throughout this process, but mostly our staff. They've been super helpful in participating. They've been super helpful in participating in, you know, what they see day-to-day and what those needs are. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of work went into, like I say, getting to this point, so thank you all. Rory, you mentioned, so this is a quick question. I was going to say, we talked about the kitchenettes and making that available to people that could eat at their desks, but then go to the cafeteria area. But there'll be some accommodations there so they wouldn't have to like heat your food in one area and walk to another that they could do.
Absolutely.
That kind of stuff.
Each, each department will have a kitchenette. It'll have a microwave, it'll have a counter, refrigerator. So yes, they can go warm something up, go back to their office, or cubicle, or whatever it is that they're working in. But yeah, that will still be an option. They just won't have a full-blown table with the break area designated area. The other thing I wanted to mention too, actually, both of these designs, the multi-department upstairs here and the treasure, the other thing that we really looked at was the natural lighting and how the, how the layout used the natural lighting and not blocking the windows. And so getting that lighting to go through the department rather than just having it for these private offices. So like for an example, in the existing auditor's area, there's going to be three private offices, but they'll have glass fronts. So we'll be able to utilize that natural lighting throughout the department. So that's kind of exciting. For somebody that's down in the basement, that's kind of a big deal is to, to not block that, so. And it, and it works towards efficiencies too. So yeah, there's, I feel very good about both of these designs. We, we did a lot of, a lot of work in just really, again, working with the employees and just how they're positioned in each location at their work areas, positioned in a way that they can see people coming at the counter, see if somebody's at the counter. They're just, you know, all aspects of these departments, I think, you know, were covered, I believe, I hope anyway. So yeah, really looking forward to getting this going.
And just to be clear, the, the new break room in the basement does have a kitchenette also as part of it?
Yes. And actually, I guess I should mention, we are working with the community of the blind, I believe it's called. It's Capital Vending who we have here at the courthouse currently. So what we're looking at is putting in a mini-market. And if you recall, several months ago, we brought that up as a concept for that deli area. What we ran into, if this area was going to be open to the public, then that mini-market needed to be manned the whole time, and that just didn't make sense. Well, this new break area will be for staff only, so it'll be key fobbed. And, and so this mini-market will have frozen foods, hot machines, a kiosk that you can go in with your debit card, and, and that is managed by Capital Vending, so.
How old will the egg salad be?
What's that?
How old will the egg salad be?
Well, the, the technology is pretty slick on these systems because like, for an example, if, 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 if it determines the temperature in the freezer goes below a certain point, say we lose power or what have you, it automatically shuts everything down so where you can't even open the doors. So there's, there's safety nets in place to, to hope that we get fresh food, so. That's the best I can say on that right now, but.
Well, you answered. I was going to say, thank you for re-asking, but I said, I was concerned that we'd have microwave and those kind of things downstairs.
Oh, yeah.
People didn't have to cart.
Absolutely, yeah. We're, we're in the process of tearing down the existing deli right now, and we do have a refrigerator, freezer, commercial. You will have a countertop, we'll have microwaves, we'll have tables, there'll be a TV in there. We're going to have new flooring, so hopefully, it will be a very pleasant area for the staff to be able to take a break. And if they choose to gamble and take a salad, then.
And it opens, the door opens.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Rory, before you go, can you walk us through the record storage? Because
Oh, yeah.
the board office has a lot of records that are stored in the auditors.
You bet. So storage was obviously a, a very large topic of conversation amongst all the departments. And what we, what the departments did is they went back and did a real thorough inventory of what they currently have. With the auditors, they've actually gone to the point of running through their vault area and actually getting rid of records, as you seen, I believe, on last week's agenda, there is approval to dispose of some records, so that freed up some space. But with regards to, like for an example, the board minutes, there is a section that was identified in the, well, it'll be the elections area, but there is a wall area identified for those minutes. And I can let Grant kind of expand because I know Grant and his team are actually even taking it a step further in looking at scanning abilities or maybe even to the point where you might be looking at quotes to get, to scan some of those documents. And I think that's where we're probably going to end up moving to eventually.
Yep, I actually submitted that as part of our five-year plan to scan the minutes. I think we still need to keep the physical minutes books, but they wouldn't have to be as accessible if we had them scanned and online. But yeah, there's, there's a place where the, the minutes will be stored. I believe it's in the auditor side, actually, the new auditor side.
Correct.
And also, there were concerns expressed earlier about the records that are in the lektrever because we, we plan to get rid of the lektrever. It's, it's an old piece of equipment that is no longer supported. It's obsolete, and we just can't keep it forever, but it is not being fully utilized right now. We have records in there that we will continue to store in the office, just in, you know, filing cabinets instead of the lektrever. There are some other records in there that are election, old voter registrations that are going to be scanned, and then we won't need the space for that there. There is some work that needs to be done as far as the storage in the basement with the attorney's office, moving some office space into the vault. And so Rory was giving us a tour the other day, showing us space in the clerk of court's storage that's adjacent to our storage in the basement that he believes is going to be freed up. Also, some space in the penthouse of the courthouse that has some mechanical equipment that's no longer used that can be cleared out, and we can put, we have a lot of records that have to be kept, but that are almost never accessed. And so that sort of stuff can go into a remote area like the penthouse. Other things are, even though they are very seldom accessed, do need to be more close at hand. So we will continue to have storage within the office and in the basement.
When you mentioned Grant, the minutes, does that include like the documents when we like approve contracts and that type of thing in the minutes, or?
Those, those documents are kept in, they are rotated. So we have the more recent years up here, and they will continue to be up here. As time goes on, they get boxed up and taken down to the vault. We have, I did do an inventory of everything we had in the vault, and we have many, many boxes of old records that are basically what you're describing, supporting documentation for actions that were taken by the board.
So are those even being possibly considered for scanning, or is that something to consider?
Yeah, that, that's something that can be looked at, but we're talking about a gargantuan project there, and that's something for a future discussion. I think we'll have enough on our hands to, to work on the, the minutes. And actually, we, we just finished getting a project approved for scanning transfer records in the plat room, and then, you know, that hasn't taken place yet, so we got to go one step at a time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board.
All right, item nine, any reports or information from the board? Hearing none. We did put on here the tour of the facility for the Cedar Falls Public Works located at 2200 Technology Parkway in Cedar Falls, only in the event that if we have three or more supervisors that are attending, we would continue to meet and then just adjourn later. But if they're not, I'm not sure, like I said, if.
I, I plan on attending.
Okay. If there's just a couple of us, we won't need it. Grant was prepared to go if he needs to from an open meeting standpoint, but if there's less than three, we certainly won't
We're going.
need to detain you as well.
I've toured it before.
I'm going to call.
Okay.
I've, I've, I've not toured. I would go if. Yeah. Yeah. I don't have anything this morning, so I can go.
I'm sorry, was that a yes or no?
That was a yes.
So there's going to be three?
I'll be there.
Okay.
Three.
Three.
Okay.
So, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Grant. All right. We'll leave the meeting open then. I'll adjourn when I get back.
All right.
Okay. Thank you all.